You've got all kinds of, all kinds of things to discuss.
Well, you know, it's indicative of generally speaking, you know, tough times. Everybody's busy, I'm sure. But that doesn't.
It's not a time to.
Yeah, I don't know. It's, it's not hard, you know, to ask. It's good for them. Anything to, anything to have more interaction is a good thing, Mike, for sure.
I totally agree. Good morning, Debbie Higgins.
Nice. I'll say that, um, uh, is it nine o'clock?
Yeah. It's nine o'clock.
Oh, woo. Do you have a bell or a bubble or two that you announce that we're good to go? Or how's that work?
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna start the meeting at nine. Good morning, everyone. As people come in, James, you can unmute yourself if you'd like. This is a meeting of citizens' concerns with the Select Board and Newbury Mass. It's my month to host it. I'm Mike Doyle. And I have a list of things I'd like to bring up, but I want two people to run the meeting. We can talk about police station. We can talk about the future town hall plans. We can talk about the needs for the senior citizens', uh, space problems. We can talk about the Plum Island future bathroom. We can talk about the new housing developments in town. We can talk about the green improvements. We can talk about COVID's effect on the town. The effects on schools in September. The effects on town hall is another thing I'd like to talk about. So, Jack, uh, anyone else? And Jim, good morning, James.
Good morning, Mike.
How you doing?
Good. How are you?
Good, thank you. So, does anyone like to open it up with a, with a, with the topic?
Mike, why don't we just take your agenda for Monday night and just sort of go down through the agenda?
Okay. So, we're talking about the Tuesday night, the Selectment's meeting?
Excuse me, Tuesday night.
Okay, so. Let me just get the agenda off right here. So, on the new business, there's a bunch of appointments. I am gonna bring up one thing I haven't seen yet is I haven't seen the Green Improvement Committee be appointed. I wanna find out about that. There's a thing about the special act modifications. We got 94 pages. I just picked it up last, uh, last night before work. I haven't read the whole thing yet. Uh, we got reorganization of the Select Board. We get appointments.
Let's start with appointments, the physical year 21 appointments.
Yes.
Who's been appointed to do what?
So, here's what we got for appointments on the, on the list. We're appointing three emergency communication offices. We have, oh goodness, hold one second.
Are they, are they police officers, Mike?
They are, the residents, okay, who I don't think these are police officers. There are, so the three people, all of which aren't residents of town, um, have gone through background checks and the paperwork for the personnel board. I don't think these people are police officers.
But you say they are members of the town or not?
They are not members. They, um, one lives in Georgetown, one lives in Salisbury, and another one resident lives in Grove.
Okay, that, all right, that makes sense. I have no other questions on that.
Okay. One second, like I said, this, this package is like over 100 pages, so just deal with me for a second.
Hey, Mike.
Yeah.
Did, uh, you know, you know, I'm gonna hijack Jimmy here for a second. Or, um, were you down the Plum Island Center at all during either of the latest greatest flash floods?
I was not, but I saw on, because I was working both days, but I saw Channel Five and Seven, both had footage of the area where the new bathroom's gonna be, supposed to be big, and it was highly, highly flooded. Um, I guess there were three different roads on Plum Island that were impassable for a period of time. They got over six inches, six inches of rain in the, in the two storms combined. So, it's like, right off the bat, it's my concern. The other thing is, just to bring everyone's attention, uh, the other night, my wife and I went to Georgia's new ice cream stand on there, and we backed in in his lot and just watched the intersection. And with the amount of traffic, people trying to cross the, uh, street to go to the parking lot, it's like, somebody will be killed in that corner if we put a bathroom there, because I think it's just way too, way too congested of an area. You've got people now coming out of Georgia's, you've got people coming out of the town lot, you've got people coming from Northern Boulevard, you've got people coming around the corner. I just think it's a very, very dangerous intersection to have kids crossing the street to go to the bathroom.
I, I bring it up because I was, you know, I, I went by shortly after, and, um, and then I was by on the, on the sunny day as well. And to your point, Mike, I agree. You know, I, not living out there, you know, day to day, I always seek input from those that are out there, and that corner is brutal. I, I was there on a not crowded time, and the people running across just to, you know, just to get to the inside, to get to either of the locations, whether they were coming from the inside or the outside of Northern Boulevard, just to cross. I believe that it's certainly inevitable, and there's a reason why I think that no other town, or it seems most towns from Gloucester to Hampton, put the bathrooms, uh, on the beach side for that particular reason.
It makes, it makes a lot of sense.
I was, I, I sat there like you for a minute. I was on my motorcycle, so I pulled over to Dave Williamson's lot, because I know Dave, and I just watched the back and forth for about a half an hour. And, um, yeah, there were, I wouldn't call them close shaves, but the inevitability, you know, if I was an actuarial table guy, it wouldn't be hard. That's a fact.
So, one of the things I did do, I, I videotaped three different segments in the 15 minutes we were there to show people how, how much of a danger I feel it is. However, before we continue with the subject, I just wanna get back to James' question. Other appointments, Jim. We're appointing the World War II Monument Committee. There's seven members to a one-year term. We are appointing one person to the Council of Aging. We are appointing, we've got a bunch of appointments, yeah. We are appointing one person to the Conservation Commission. And I think that's, that, and one more, we have one person we're appointing to the Open Space Committee. That plus the police appointments are the total number of appointments we're doing that Tuesday night.
Thank you.
Other things on the agenda. Okay, yeah, talking, like I said, we're talking about the, the special act modifications voted by a town meeting. I just wanna read that over. Everybody yet? The reorganization of the Board, appointments to the Select Board member, to the East Invest Veterans Service Board. I thought I was, I was always already on that. Old business, we're gonna talk about Town Hall project discussion. We're gonna review the Triton Regional.
Wait, wait, wait.
Yes.
Can we stop there at Town Hall? I see Tracy is online. Do we have, maybe Tracy can help us. Do we have any conceptual drawings yet for what the new town hall might be like?
I don't know, Tracy, I think she just opened the meeting. I'm not sure if she stayed. So, she was the host of the meeting. She, we got the meeting going. She said she'd check in at 10. I don't think, I do not think she's here. Okay, um, I asked for the conceptual drawings, because I heard there was something, and the only thing I received was the drawings of the combined police station, town hall, which we did in 2015, I think it was. So, I haven't seen nothing other than that.
Okay.
Michael.
Yes, sir.
On the subject of plans, then, and if Tracy does or doesn't have her ears on, in the same vein, I think it's incumbent to see what plan is going to be used, um, going forward at the Plum Island bathrooms. Is, what are they working off of? I understand, you know, the firemen, general contract, you know, I understand how it's going, but what are they working off of? You know, going forward? I, I just wonder what they, what they, what they're using.
I have not seen the plans for that. The only thing I have heard is that the money that we got from Boost's town through the state, the $40,000, has already been spent for bathroom fixtures, which I was a little surprised about because of the fact that we still don't know if we're gonna have a bathroom there yet. It's like, it's, yes, we didn't sell the land, but I, I, I still buy reservations with the amount of revenues that we're not gonna be getting from the state and the amount of revenues that the town's gonna be short on. I don't know where the money's gonna come from.
I think it's a messaging thing, Mike. I think the town meeting, um, it, it, it was not made clear that, I don't, I think the town agrees that there should be bathrooms there. But what I think needs to be, um, messaged properly is that it could be done for a lot less than a half a million dollars, that it could be done in a finer way utilizing that central, that center parking lot, you know, and I, you know, I think it's, um, again, I go back to, it's a messaging thing, although it was presented as, let's just sell the building. The, the, the notion that, that and came that, oh, you don't want anything. I, I don't think, I, I think that message needs to be straightened up. I want a bathroom out there, but I don't want a constantly flooded half a million dollar bathroom that were constantly sterilizing, et cetera, over, whether it's rainstorm, snow, slush, ice, you know, because if there's a flood during a winter storm and the brackish water freezes, that's an entirely different component, you know, I, I think the messaging that we can put a bathroom up there to solve the summer needs of all the island, you know, concerns, you know, has gotta be brought forth, and then the savings component in conjunction with that would be a better message for everybody, because I think we gotta get out from underneath that, that building. I, I don't think there's a good thing to, I don't think there's a good thing for the town out of that building, besides get out from under it and put the bathrooms across the street.
Right. Uh, one of the things that was brought up before was the fact that we could, I think it was Ron, Ron Derrick brought it up. We could put in a $26,000 portable bathroom unit that hooks up to water and surge, that hooks up to electricity, that can be moved if, if we get a major storm. Okay, so you can just hook it up, unhook the water and surge, and get it out of there.
At, at, at our most recent finance meeting, Mike, Marshall Jesperson and Gene Case have both been at, uh, large-scale events. One, a winery, and I forget what the, uh, what Gene went to, I, I forget either one of them, but both were very impressed with the presentation of the alleged temporariness, that they can come and go and be a, uh, be an aesthetically positive thing for the island, while at the same time offering, uh, we taxpayers the opportunity to pull our investment in and out of there according to the weather.
Exactly. Hi, hi, Janine. Good morning. You can unmute yourself if you'd like and join us. Anyone else, too? Uh, there's another phone number here with unmute, your phone's muted. You can just unmute yourself and join the conversation. Other things on the agenda, real quickly. So, we're gonna talk about the Town Hall. We're gonna review the Triton Regional Agreement. We're gonna execute the tax agreement with the solar project out in Byfield. And there's a, there's a thing about the Select Board Code of Ethics Discussion. I've asked three peoples about what that's about, because there's no paperwork, and I've not gotten an answer yet. So, I just don't want, because the last time it went like that, it was a complete, um, discussion about me. So, we'll see what happens. Other things, one of the things we're gonna be discussing on Tuesday night is the senior citizens' concerns about space. Evelyn Neuss did a, Evelyn, um, Cindy Small and Joyce Macheros did an amazingly good report about the lack of space we have now. And the needs, they have, there's their needs. I consider the needs for the seniors more important right now than the town hall, because town hall is, we're, we're in there, okay, and it's working out fine right now. So, I cannot see, uh, I, I think this, the senior's concern is much more valid right now than it is the town hall.
I totally agree, Mike. I think that's, that should be a priority.
Because of the fact that what, what's over there right now, it's, it's a hipper nightmare.
It's an, it's inadequate. And everybody, right, and everybody can overhear everything you're saying and talking about, and there's no privacy of any kind, and, and there really isn't an opportunity to gather together if you wanna be, you know, you know, doing something jointly, you know? Not that we can do much right now, but, but you know what I'm saying? There's no availability later, you know, to do a knitting class or a yoga class or a, you know, a, a group of any kind to do anything.
One of the things I, I considered, and I've, I've been placed in charge of, as the liaison for the Selectment, to deal with the senior problem, I would like to look at the current police station, okay? And when they move out into the new station, that might be the solution, because it's got parking, it's handicapped accessible. I, a lot of work was done in that building. I, I think for not a lot of dollars, we can make that whole space work for the seniors with offices, with the meetings floor in the middle where we used to have our Selectment's meetings. I think it's something we should look at.
So, would we leave Town Hall where it is, then, kind of thing, or?
Right now, but it's like, we can, that's, this is just one man's opinion. I, I haven't talked to enough people yet. Hopefully, one of the things I'm gonna do is, I wanna hear from the seniors. Where would they like to be? But the other good thing about this location, it's sent out, it's centralized for the town.
Right.
And also, I'm, I'm getting concerned about if Town Hall does remove, we turn there, this street has gotten very busy. Because since COVID, yeah, the butchery's business is up 300%. We got the police station down the street, we got the fire station on the street, we have residents on the street. It's a busy little street, and I, I think that adding Town Hall to the old site, it's, may not be the smartest move, but once again, I don't make, I, I'll make the decisions, but I do what the people want.
Right. Well, and you don't do it alone, so.
Right, exactly. So, um, we talked, and the, the police station is moving along at a good clip. I heard there was a track that was not gonna be ready till June, but now I'm hearing that was a mistake. Then I guess they, I gotta, they're looking forward to the end of the year for a finished, finished product. So, that being said.
Mike, can I stop you there for a second?
Sure.
Have there been any reports from the Building Committee, and I would have thought, at least on a quarterly basis, for the police station, do you know?
So, what, once again, Jim, have there, any reports?
Yeah, no, at the town meeting, they said that all the committee reports would be coming later, because it was a Zoom meeting. Do we know on, if a report, I would have guessed, you know, maybe quarterly, there should be a couple of reports.
I, I, I agree. I mean, I know Bob Connors puts up a weekly update on Facebook. But it's, and like, but I have not seen any other reports, uh, come out, okay? Right now, just, we're having a problem in the, it was in the town, the residents are having a problem because the, there's a huge rat problem now in all our, in all our yards.
But those Facebook things are just, are just pictures of what's going on. It's not a report.
Right, exactly, yeah.
You know?
It's just, it's just, it's basically a progress update.
Yeah.
Yeah, but no.
Physical looking, right.
Mike, I guess the question, and maybe you could ask it on Tuesday, is what's the status of all the town reports? And I'm gonna guess, depending on the importance of the committees, some would be extra annually, others quarterly, uh, for all the committees, and, and how can we get them? Of course, the best way to get them would be on the town website, just have them put them on the town website.
Totally agree with James. But I will bring that up on Tuesday night. Other, other hot topics in town right now, the new housing developments on High, High Street, on High Road. We got one on 105 High Road, we've got one down by Parker River. Uh, we've got the 40B going in Byfield, supposedly. And this is just the beginning. Newbury has the most developable land in Essonne County.
Oh, geez.
Oh, geez, okay, and now that the fact that the builders have found a way to split some of our bylaws by putting a 40B in, because that opens up the gates for a lot more. They, they don't have to follow all Newbury's laws, per se, because they're a 40B. That, that can have a huge effect on our landscape. Good morning, Frank. I know he's, he's not gonna cut audio yet, but that, so that being said, I, I'm waiting for the Green Committee to be re-put together, because it's like, we've talked about the green, and everyone agrees that the green needs work, but I'm not seeing much being done. I wanna see, you know, I wanna see some trees planted, I wanna see some trees trimmed up. I wanna see that pond cleaned up, even, even though we've had, a gentleman's done a great job, but we still need some aeration in there. There's a lot of, there's a lot of things going on in Newbury. My final, this is the topic I was gonna talk about today, too, is COVID. I personally think it's time to reopen our Town Hall somewhere, somehow. Either appointment only, but we have to open up Town Hall again, because the rest of the state is opened up. I mean, I've been back to work for six weeks in, in retail. There is a lot of people, I think people have the act, they have the right to be able to go to Town Hall.
Well, I highly suggest that if we do do something like that, uh, it's by appointment only. That's what a lot of them are doing nowadays.
That's, that's the fact.
And that, that would be perfectly safe and okay.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, we are, we are just holding our own as a state, and given this summer, uh, you know, people coming and going and, you know, you're seeing, you're still seeing breakouts, and we have to be, we have to do things appropriately and slowly, and, you know, you know, this is, you know, it's a novel virus. We still don't have all the information and science data to prove all of this, you know? So, so by appointment only is, is probably really a very good idea.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent idea. Um, we also, I just heard that one of the Newbury put nursing homes, which had had a nice clean record, is, had two deaths, and they got like a, a, a fair amount of sickness in the nursing home, and that's where it's really dangerous.
Right, and what do we, what are, what are the schools doing? Do we know yet?
We don't know. It's like, I've, I've been watching the meetings. One of the things that was discussed was, it's like, I've heard there's only a maximum of 10 kids per classroom, because the, the school committee voted for the six, six-foot, uh, very, you know, barrier. I don't know how they're gonna, I've heard such, such things as, some kids will go Monday and Wednesdays, and some kids will go Tuesdays and Thursdays, and I don't know what's gonna happen on Friday. I don't know if they're gonna be able to feed, I don't know how they're gonna be able to feed the kids, you know, with everything going on. So, I don't know. There's a lot of questions.
Brian Forgett, uh, our superintendent for Triton, put out a very lengthy, uh, email addressing some of that on Thursday, I believe. If you go to the website, he put out, as he usually does, he's a good, a great communicator. He, uh, he gave a very current status of what they're doing, so I, I, I would, it, this, it'd be a long discussion, but Brian really makes it very, uh, appealable, uh, reading-wise, so.
Where do you find it, Jack?
Triton Regional School District, um, has a website, and Brian is front and foremost on it.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. It, it, it's a great read, and it's, the educators face, like all of us, you know, a daunting task going forward, no doubt.
It's huge.
And also, like, I mean, the cost of, if everyone needs a mask, if everyone needs, you know, hand cleaning stuff, there's just a lot of things. Plexiglas is gonna be after putting up all over the school, and they may have already done that. I haven't been over to the school this summer, but, um, it's gonna be interesting.
It's evolution.
It's evolution, that's right.
It's a new reality, it's the new reality. I mean.
It is a new reality.
Yeah.
Does anyone have any other things they wanna discuss? I mean.
Yeah, I, I had an issue where citizens' concerns has been taken off the agenda for the Florida Selectment. I'd like to see it put back on the agenda.
I do, I totally agree, James. Um, I don't know why it's, I mean, the fact that we have Zoom meetings, we can still, we're proving it right now. Citizens can talk to a Selectman on Zoom, we can do it with me, we can do it with the Board. So, I totally agree, we should have a section with citizens' concerns again and reinstate it, and it's like, instead of going through the rigmarole, because one of the, one of the things that I'm concerned about is the fact that this meeting on the 28th, we're not gonna have another meeting for another month. The fact that my, my agenda is just thick is ridiculous. I mean, I got, that's the amount of paperwork I gotta read this weekend, and I only get three days, and I'm working two of them, but the bottom line is, let's do it. So, I don't wanna have a four-hour meeting. Let's do two two-hour meetings, like we normally do, and, but they deal with this much paperwork, it's ridiculous.
I, I agree, the, the meeting schedule, one in August and one in September, doesn't seem to align with the burden of what you guys have in place to get accomplished.
Totally agree. I'm, I'm, one of the things I'm gonna bring up on Tuesday night is to reestablish our August and September's meeting.
July as well, you know, it's, it's, it's three months, Jim. The, it's July is a singular meeting, August is a singular meeting, September is a singular meeting, so that's one quarter of the year.
Right, and they only, and they only want it three times.
And, and that's not fair to you, and I, I would think that summer scheduling aside, you know, a two, you know, every other Tuesday night isn't a schedule that's hard under any circumstance to try to respectfully attend to, you know? Every other Tuesday night for a couple of hours i- isn't our high, shouldn't be that, uh, expectation.
It should not be hard. And so, that being said, so, I mean, we, this is the first meeting, we haven't had, the meeting we had before Town Meeting, and Town Meeting was what, three weeks ago, for, you know, it's been over a month since we met. The fact that we haven't met yet since the, uh, the election, we haven't had a reorganization of the Board, which is overdue. So, it's like.
What's, what's the purpose of it, Mike?
What?
Why, why, why cut the meetings? What's the purpose?
The purpose is to give everyone a summer break. Like I said last year, September 1st, everyone hits the road again, as far as getting back to a, a routine. And the fact that we only have one meeting in September is totally ridiculous.
Well, the data shows that, uh, people sitting in front of computers, the max amount of time that they can actually focus and be productive is two hours max. They recommend an hour and a half, but two hours max. Anything over that, you're losing productivity and/or, you know, attention span, so.
I totally agree.
You know, it's.
We've had a few meetings that went past, I mean, went well into three hours, and, and like, it's too long of a meeting.
Yeah.
Also, I feel bad for people who attend a meeting at 7:00 thinking they're gonna be hurt, but maybe at 7:30, a quarter of eight, and they don't get back on until 9:15.
Exactly.
Because of the fact that, um, it's, we have to follow an agenda. So, that being said, um, are there any more discussions about Town Hall ideas?
I, my suggestion, Mike, there's been so many ideas over the past three years. My suggestion, Mike, there's been so many ideas over the past three years, that the Select Board has to start making some decisions, hard decisions. And get to it, that's, that's the point. I don't think, I want to get bogged down in what my ideas are now. I think I'd like to know what more the town has to think, what's their overall thinking for both the Council on Aging and the Town Hall, they're both important subjects.
Very much so. The lease is coming up on our current location, and it's, I've been told it's been put out to bid. For the terms for the next, we're going to stay three years, we're going to stay five years, are we going to do a year lease? I figure we have to at least take, I think we should take a five year lease. Because by the time the station's filled, finished, and we decide on a location, and we build the location, or we renovate a location, it's going to take five years.
Mike, I don't know if I agree with you on that. If the town can make a decision, it seems to me, on the lease, I would suggest just the opposite, you take a two year lease, and then after that's up, you move ahead with another year or two, whatever you need. Now, if the town decides to take the old town hall down, or give it to somebody else, then it's a different complexity. It seems to me, the decision in the town hall is, should be controlling somewhat as a term of your lease.
Very, that's a good point, James.
I agree, Mike, I agree somewhat with Jim, I'd like to see what the town has, what their ideas are. We go back to what plans is anybody working off of first, but then the budgeting, the town meeting votes, that'll require, you know, another cycle or so, I would think. So, you know, I'm thinking that we'd have to lock into the existing town hall for, not an extended period, but certainly a three to five year window.
Yeah.
You know, it's going to be, if they're coming to the town, depending on what they ask, if they're coming to the town for more money, Newbury isn't, the taxpayer in Newbury is generally aren't inclined to, we just spent eight million for the police station, to ask within even a three, five year period for another one, two, or three million to top off the town hall savings as to what we've put to the side to go with the construction. I think that's going to be a tough vote for the Newbury taxpayer at large, within such a close time period.
Jack, my comment to you on that is, the town has already committed, three years ago, to the town hall. In last September, they took a million dollars out of their free cash and put it to the town hall account. They've got more than adequate funds at the moment to move through the whole design and bid stage on this. It's not a big building that could be done in, in hand a year from now, and then another year for the building. So it's very conceivable, two years from now. In addition, the money for the, should be, for the total cost, if you go into a bond program, which again, this has been talked about, the majority of the people in town have said, yes, this is what we want to do. So we should, we should stay that course in that next two year window. Unless all of a sudden, there's a, there's a complete change in the plan. But there's been a plan. For three years, they haven't executed the plan. And right now, they're leaning more and more to, in the past year, to renovate the town hall. Now, whether people like that or not, that's effectively what's happened. That can change tomorrow, and maybe next Tuesday night, there'll be a different plan. But until there is a different plan in place, you've got to, you should be making your arrangements for the lease of the town hall to be consistent with the plan on renovating the old town hall. And if you have 10 people on this call, 10 people have 10 different opinions of that, I don't think that's the issue for this call as much as it is for the Select Board to decide next Tuesday.
Is there a committee in place?
There's no committee.
Not yet.
There is. They've asked the public to join the committees, nobody's interested. It goes around in circles.
And there's no plan.
Good morning.
To the point, Jim, there is no plan. So until, like you say, until the selectmen step up and say, we're going to renovate, or we're going to build, or we're going to do this without direction, I would think that there's no two year, anything's going to happen in two years, we don't have a direction.
Well, I guess, Jack, I don't see that. There is a plan. The plan is to renovate the old town hall. They've just recently put a million dollars in the kitty to do that. So there's been a consistent plan for three years to do that.
And that's a macro plan. Someone needs a physical, as you know, you need architectural, to draw up what the Council of Aging would need downstairs, to draw up what the demands of the town hall administratively would require, the space, the parking lots, all that hasn't been decided, you know? Until there's something we can sink our teeth into, nobody's going to vote, I wouldn't.
Jack, the, last, in June, the Select Board decided to ask the architect to come to the meeting next Tuesday night. That's the plan at hand, he should tell you. There's been no plans at town hall for the Council of Aging. I think that again can change tomorrow, but today, there is no plans for that to happen. Leslie, any comments on that? We can't, you're muted.
Yeah, Leslie. Go give him.
Interesting stuff to come, no doubt.
Yeah. One of the things that some, some people remarked to me, the size of the police station, the attic is huge, and, but I, somewhere in the back of my mind, I was told, you cannot use the police station for public, a regular public access, like a senior citizens on the third floor, because it's a police station. And I think, I think that's a valid, valid question. But, but I think this, I mean, I've been told that the amount of space upstairs in the new police station is huge. And like you, come up, come to my house, come look at it. The building is a very large building.
There's no design or plans for use of that attic yet?
They, they, they're saying they're going to use it for storage, but I'm telling you.
Holy cow, that's a lot of storage.
That's a lot of storage. Also, I heard, you know, there's going to be, there's going to be computers up there and stuff, and so, I have no idea. But the building, like I said, because of the fact that they've raised the land so much, that, I mean, it's just totally come out of, it's like, it's a very big building, it's closer to the street than I thought it was going to be, and the height of it, I mean, I am, I am shocked how high it is. But, so. Leslie, just, can you hear us? Can you hear me? All right, so some of the things we've talked about already, talking about police station, we talked about town hall, senior citizens concerns with this, we talked about the problems with the location of the Pom Island Basin with the flooding, the recent flooding. We talked about, we haven't really touched about the housing developments. We've mentioned about the Green, no committee in place, and the effects of COVID on the town. There's, Leslie, do you have anything? I can't hear you still. Put up cards. All right. Has anyone else got anything they want to discuss?
I see Joe online, I don't know if Joe can hear us, but I'm wondering if Joe had any comments.
Joe, Jake, can you unmute yourself? And Deb Higgins, Debbie Higgins, I don't know, it's like, if you can hear us or not, if there will be input.
Can you hear me?
Joseph, I can hear you now.
Okay, I'm having some computer issues up in Maine here. I, actually, I came in a little bit late, so I, I don't think I have any, anything relevant, you know, other than, you know, I think, I think we should just kind of lay out all, all the possible options of, you know, of what, what makes a good town hall, and what makes a good senior center, and, and figure it out. I, I happen to think that, you know, the present location, you know, it's a, it's a nice, nice work environment and convenient, but I really haven't given it much thought beyond that.
John?
Joe, there's some correspondence that's going to be brought up at the meeting on Tuesday, and one of them's from, a petition from Comcast Cable Communications. I haven't looked at the details, you might want to look at that.
Like I said, I just picked up the packet, it's on my agenda to read today, the whole packet.
Can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay. All fixed.
All fixed. Do you have any input?
No, it's.
Okay.
Leslie, can I ask a question?
Yes.
With Comcast is, other cable systems are being pretty generous in helping bridge the digital divide. In other words, students that can't afford internet, the cable companies I know in central Mass and in Rhode Island are providing low cost internet for, for families with school children. So I know Comcast had a $10 deal for a while that's scheduled to end before September. So I think, although we may not have the regulatory power to have them do anything with internet, certainly talking of what's good for the town, anything they can do to help distance learning and help the schools with affordable internet, I think is a good idea.
That's a great idea, that's, you know, you stop and think about it. Certainly through the rest of the year, they should offer low cost, because nobody knows on the Zoom what the schools are going to have to live with in the next six months.
Yeah, when, when the internet first started, it was, no one ever thought of it as being a necessity, being a utility like, you know, like power and water. But I think more and more, we're discovering that it has become a necessity. And, you know, people that, that can't afford the internet are really being denied education where their kids are.
And it's not going to, it's not going to go away.
No, that's true.
One other, quick change of subject, one of the things that was, somebody asked me to bring up today, was Newbury Fort just put a ban on out of town residents and parking in their new, their big lot at the end of, in Newbury Fort. I was asked, is Newbury going to do that? Which, what's everyone's opinion? It's like, should we shut down parking lots, Newbury residents only? Should we keep, keep it at status quo? Because, I mean, Gloucester has just shut down residents only, Newbury Fort's now done it, I'm not sure what Salisbury situation is now, but if we, if we are one of the few beaches open to the public, it could be, it could be a nightmare. And I've been hearing a lot that last weekend was very congested down there.
I thought I read in the paper, Mike, that they, they opened the Newbury lots to people outside of Newbury.
They have, but Newbury Fort, Newbury Fort changed that Wednesday night. So Newbury Fort, their half is just Newbury Fort residents. Is Newbury going to do that? And I have, I haven't got an answer yet.
Well, don't you have to have a parking permit, any way to park in any of the lots that, for Newbury?
Just on the, just on the street, you need a parking permit, or in the central lot? But then we still have two or three other lots that people, that you have people parking in your lot. I mean, the big one next to us, proposed bathhouse, is a private lot that anyone can go into. I've heard that there's a lot more people parking down by the Pom Island Grill again, than walking. I heard a lot of people are parking down by the Wilkinson Bridge and walking to the beach. It's like I said, if that's the case, it can only get worse if everyone else is shutting down.
Yeah. Well, at the very least, they, no one should be allowed to park unless they have masks for themselves and the people in their car.
Right.
I, I was in, I was in the parking lot of PI and watching the people walk in, you know, past police officers without masks, and, you know, I'd say only about 10% of the people were wearing masks.
Well, the night I went down to Georgia's for an ice cream with my wife, I walked over to this, this, the town lot, and I'll say, more than half the cars there did not have Newbury stickers. And I'm not sure when we stopped, I mean, I thought there was, I know Steve's been out sick, but the bottom line is, we should have somebody there to ticketing if it's, if it's a Newbury residents only. It's, that's just my opinion.
Well, what's that got to do with, can't the police do that?
Right, I totally agree, but.
I mean, that's not the Board of Health, that's the police.
Right, that's the police. But if we, we either, we have to make a plan and stay the plan. And I don't, and I think there's a lot of, now that Newbury Fort's changed the plan down there, it is going to affect us somewhere.
Oh, it will.
Oh yeah, people are going to turn around from that beach, you know, we can't park there, we're going to find a place to park. So, and like what the governor did yesterday, I mean, people coming into the state, he wants them to quarantine if they, if coming from a hot zone. It's like, I don't know how, I don't know how you enforce that.
I think he's going on the honor system.
Right. But, right, from what I've seen, people, the honor system as far as COVID is really, it's changed.
Well, you know, that's, I'll comment on that, if you have 10 cars in a Newbury lot that are from out of town and don't have stickers, you went down there once a day, the police could take their license plates down and ticket them.
Right.
The monitoring of this doesn't have to be 24 hours a day, it could be for half an hour every day with one police officer.
And once the board gets out, exactly.
Once the board is being placed, it's, whatever it might be, I'm not sure. More discussion ought to come, it changes every month.
Yeah, it does.
Whenever I've been down to PI, I've always seen a police officer there. So, I mean, they have the manpower, you know, to pick it, so why don't they?
I totally agree.
Again, I thought I read in the paper this week that Newbury was opening their lots up to out of towners. Maybe I misread.
No, they have.
So that being said, there could be out of towners parked in our lot that are there illegally.
Yes.
They can't come into our, not like the central lot, it's Newbury residents only. It says it right on the side. We have other lots privately owned where people are parking and paying 20 bucks a car.
Which is legal.
Which is legal, okay? But what I'm saying is, if Newbury Fort has changed their opinion, they're not letting people park in their private lot, their, their public lot anymore unless you live in town, that's a huge game changer.
All right, now that's another question then, Mike. If it is a private lot, can you, can the town say, we're sorry that out of towners can't park in a private lot?
That's a legal question, I'd have to run past town council. Excellent question. I'll, I'll put that one down.
Because that's going on in, where did I see that? I think Gloucester, the guy has a private lot, and the residents are all complaining about it, but legally, he's done everything to approve right, so. But you're absolutely right, if our beach is the only one that's open to, to more people, we are going to have an increase and, right, potentially have a rise in, you know, illness, so.
Right. It's like, I mean, one of the concerns I, I'm seeing a lot, where I'm working, I see a lot of Florida licenses, a lot of people, and they, they've now come up, and they've left lots, and so it's going to be, we're not done this, this is not over yet.
Oh gosh, no.
No, far from it.
Leslie?
Yes?
I was circling back to the solar thing for a moment. The auto salvage yard up on Route 1 at the base of the circle, before you go over the bridge on Route 1, has a significant size solar array as well. The town is entering into an agreement with one, and Yasiar is on deck. What I'm asking is, from the planning board's side, is, is every project that's from the planning board side, is, is every, um, project that's presented to you individual or does the town have yet a process to address the, what appears to be, uh, you know, uh, like, like development of, um, housing, there seems to be a want to do solar farms. Do we have a process, uh, yet in place besides the regular permitting process dedicated to solar farms only?
Well, the process, you know, it's gonna happen on Main Street is, um, because they had to clear a lot of trees, so it had to go through public hearing and they had to have a special permit.
I'd be curious, my, you know, I, I see there's a, there's a tax component, you know, obviously there's revenues involved. There's a pilot, uh, payment in lieu of taxes involved in your seers. I'm wondering, and of course, that's not your purview, uh, neither Mike nor, uh, Leslie per se. I was just curious as to tax assessment wise and, um, tax value assessor wise, how these, um, evolved. Do we get any pennies out of the auto salvage solar farm versus Yasiar's, uh, engagement with the town to provide payments? The same way it appears the solar farm agreement is written, though not engaged yet for our town transfer station landfill mound has a tax component. I was just wondering if there's yet, if Tracy has her ears on, if there's yet been any, um, any, again, a, a down the road process for all of them.
I don't know, um, what the agreement is for the solar farm off of Route 1. But I know there is, I'm pretty sure there is an agreement that town will, I think it is in lieu of taxes, but they'll receive, um.
Comparable.
Yep, they'll be.
I just wondered how that, I, I was just comparing that because I'm trying to do apples to apples, or at least in the same bag apples, oranges via the auto, the old auto salvage solar farm. The town's proposed salvage yard versus private, totally private rights of Yasiar. We're establishing some protocols, whether we know it or not, because clearly the town is town owned property solar array. Commercial property, if the auto salvage establishes something for a solar array. And Yasiar's is private property rights ownership. So we got three different instances of solar arrays being utilized here in the town. And I can't find anything that would lead me to say, oh, this is how it's done and this is what will happen tax wise, you know. It seems everything's.
Like a simple standard. I think it does depend on how, how the land is private, um, town owned or, um, commercial.
Thank you, appreciate that. Thank you.
I, I, I am gonna look at, I've asked, Damon was spearheading the plan to put solar panels on the town landfill, plan, build site. I wanna find out what, what status that is and also the dollars and cents involved with that.
Thank you.
The one on the landfill, um, the paperwork is being done, but there has been no actual commitment.
There is a term, there's a term sheet available that the town kindly furnished to the public. And that's what I'm referring to. I, I, I've read the term sheet. The proposed, although nothing is, you know, nobody's obligated to either side, it's clear the terms or, or the, the structure of terms has been established at the landfill. And I was just, again, I'm just looking for a singular process and understanding each one of them has different components, and that's why we have zoning and review boards. I was just wondering what, you know, what the whole package is coming to, because there's a lot of opportunity for solar array build outs here in town as well as single family build outs. I think it's part of the coming, uh, process, that's all.
Right. We have six minutes left. Anyone have any other discussions before we wrap up things tonight?
Keep the sunscreen on.
Wash your hands.
I think Dr. Fuji, I think Dr. Fuji should have a second try at throwing out that first pitch of the baseball. I should, I think we should give him a dozen tries. As an ex-basketball player, I'm sure he can play better than that.
And then an ex-short, he's supposedly an ex-all-star shortstop too. I was horrified at his throw. That was awesome. Yes, I, I couldn't believe that either.
That was great comedy.
Guys, he's 70 and give him.
curve in the line.
I'd move him up to the Little League pitchers mound first.
How about last night's Fenway pitch? It's not a first pitch, it's a first drop. They dropped it from the, from the green monster to the catcher's.
Oh, really?
Just had a little toss. Alls they had to do was hold it down there. Baker, Walsh and, uh, I might forget the third one, but they just dropped it over the, over the wall.
It was good, it was good to see baseball back last night. I was like, I, I missed it a little bit. I'm sorry.
Now, Leslie, we need an update on your new grandchild. Everything good?
Oh, yeah, everything's good. He's very healthy. Made on.
Good, congratulations.
Once again, congratulations, really.
Yeah.
We're, we're pretty, uh, pretty happy about it.
Yeah.
No complaints over here. With this COVID, it makes it a little bit.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Real sticky.
Yeah.
So, one, one of the things I really want, I want people to stop attending the, uh, meetings, and like I said, I, I would like to be able to get meetings open to the public soon. Some way, I think we can do it safely, but the fact is, the Zoom meetings are good, but we're still, you lose a, a component when you can't look across the table, somebody in the eye and, and talk to them.
Mike, that, it's the chairman's purview, but ask for a vote. Put them all on record. If the chairman gets to determine it, but you can ask for a vote. He can lose one to four and still enact no communications, but everybody's on the record.
Right, so I think we have to start doing that on a regular basis then.
What's the future of?
Once a night, once per meeting.
Yeah, once per meeting.
What's the future of further Saturday mornings with other selectmen? Is this on a?
This is on a basis. So this is monthly basis. Uh, I think, um, J I. September, I think Jeff might be next month.
Well, Jeff's last.
Oh, Jeff, Jeff's last, okay. So Jerry will be working in. So, yeah, it's like, it's.
The question, Mike, is how, what's the frequency of these Saturday?
So once a month, a different selectman will host them.
Yeah, this, this, you know, sort of falls in the same preview as, is once a month adequate to cover town business at hand? Quite frankly, it doesn't, it doesn't seem to be at this time.
I think, Jim, if we open up the citizens' concerns again at our selectmen's meetings, I think that, I think once a month will work because as much as you got, a lot's been discussed here today, you need the whole board to discuss these things so we can get decisions made.
Mike, I agree with you, but what Janine had said earlier is most people's FaceTime on a Zoom, after an hour, it burned out. They wanna drink beer or watch TV or go outside and do stuff. You know, these hours, these, anything that goes on beyond, it's like a child's time. And that's why in elementary and high school, all classes are less than an hour because you can't hold their attention. Children, all we are is big children. And we have meetings of Zoom contests that go on for two and three or four hours. People are gone.
Oh, yeah, they're gone, like, I mean.
Checked out, their minds are completely gone and burned.
I mean, even after the, the other night after the public hearing on the golf, we, we had, there was a public hearing, the planning board had. And as much as I wanted to, it was like, after a full day at work, I could not sit for another hour and a half. Just a, it was a long day.
One thing to do it on one subject. It's another thing to do it on 35 different line items on agenda for the selectmen's meeting.
Absolutely.
Totally agree.
It's another tool in the box, and there's a balance. There's a balance between two monthly selectmen's meeting and a monthly one-on-one with the rotating select. I think there's a balance for sure. I think there's value to this, but I think there's as much value into our raising our hands and asking five selectmen to Mike's point directly. It takes five selectmen to make a point. No matter what Michael does today after this great discussions, he's still gonna grab four other people's attention plus Tracy to make our points. And it's, it's wonderful to table these things each time with all of them at the same time. I, I agree with Mike.
Yeah.
But the, the point too is that so long as, uh, citizens' concerns are not being, um, heard, then maybe more of these is, is much more important. You know, increase the freak, maybe every other week or something, because nobody's getting their points across or having any input or discussion or even the ability to ask a simple question.
And that's, that's the key. People still have a ability to ask a question of your government.
I agree, Lo. The, the notion that we should mail in our concerns and not have this face-to-face with our elected officials, I entirely agree with you. There, there needs to be more of this because that's the accountability factor between our representative government and we, those who are being represented.
Right. There's no dialogue when you send in an email.
Ten, ten.
I could make a suggestion.
Sure.
Tune into, um, the planning board, and it's a little bit different than the selectmen, and tune into the, uh, Conservation Commission, and it's, it's very different too. They do.
Marshall runs a great, Marshall runs a fine interactive finance committee meeting too. He takes citizens' concerns as well.
He takes questions too.
Not hard to do.
Oh, no, it isn't hard to do at all. You know, I was.
It does take a much longer time.
It does. Yes, it does. But you know why?
But that, that was our obligation in, in taking the seat to represent those to complain that I give too much time for something I volunteered for. I suggest to get out of the dodge and let somebody who has the time get in. And I'm not saying that negative or positive, but you know, the, the notion that less is more and let it go doesn't fly, I don't think.
No, it isn't.
Question. Leslie, how often is the planning board having their regular meetings?
We haven't changed our schedule at all. Twice a month.
All right. Awesome. You, you have a plate load of, of work that you say at least twice a month. I see the select board has more on their plate than the planning board. So to be once a month makes no sense.
I totally, so one of the things I'm walking away with today is a list of things to bring up this selectmen's meeting. And my, my concerns are right along. We need two meetings a month. So I'm gonna bring that back up. I'm gonna bring the fact that citizens' concerns back up. Uh, reports, town reports I'm gonna bring up. Committee for, a committee for the town hall, I think that's time. Uh, I think we gotta discuss the parking lot issue on the Palma Island. So I've got a list here for people. And I, so I promise you, I will bring this list to the board on Tuesday night.
Here's what I'd like, Michael, here's what I'd like you to do further. If you just got list to writing on a Word document and attach it to an email to Tracy and all the other select people, anybody involved, Martha Taylor, Mike, on the coffee, to say, by the way, on the Saturday coffee Zoom, here's, here's 12 other items that were brought up by citizens that are not on the agenda for next Tuesday. And they should be put on future agendas and continue to follow it up on many of these issues.
Right, good point.
Well, then we'd have to, Mike, then, Jim, we have to time these Saturdays so they aren't within the 48-hour period because Michael can't get any of this on an agenda because we're meeting Tuesday. So that the meetings would have to be staggered in between that Saturday so that Mike could bring it forward and get it onto a formal agenda as opposed to asking the chair to bring it forward where you can be summarily shut down.
Right. We do have a section where we, where we update the board on town, on meetings we've had. So on my meeting update, I can bring up all this stuff.
And if you are meeting every other week, like other committees, then you would have the ability to maybe not put it on this week, but in two weeks, you know what I mean?
So that's, I think I'm, I'm gonna really push hard on that. Uh, I'm not sure if Jerry is still with us, but I, I'd like to see what she thinks about meeting more frequently. About, may I, is Jerry still there?
I'm here.
So what do you think about meeting more frequently as far as not once a month? I lost her. Mrs. Mrs. Evie. There you are.
Okay, I don't have a problem meeting twice a month.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's.
You know, I don't, I don't have a, a problem at all. What is the big deal? It's after, you know, it's, but, but then evening, so it's not like it can take time away from anyone's working.
Right.
And it would make it a lot easier because, as you said, Mike, the quantity of things that we received in, in, uh, you know, to review for the documents is kind of ridiculous.
It is. I mean, it's like, it's, there's gotta be over 100 pages here. That's a lot, that's a lot of information to swallow. When I, like I said, normally I work Saturday and Sunday. I'm off today for this, for the meeting. But it's, it's a lot to go through.
Right, exactly. And I, I try to read it, um, the computer, and I really can't because I'm up in Maine now. So come Monday, I'm gonna have to bug back down just to pick up mail so I can, I can read it. Because, um, one of the documents was, um, you know, it was a form completed in ink and it can't be, it's, it's not legible. You can't read it on the computer.
Right.
Anyway.
It's 10:05. Um, I thank everyone for coming. Uh, I think this has been a, a nice forum. Uh, I want to do them more frequently, so. But I will take your concerns to the board and I hope everyone has a great weekend.
Thank you, Mike.
Michael, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Turn out, Mike.
Thank you.
Biggest one so far.
Yeah.
Good day.
Yeah.
Bye.